All hour Tuesday, July 27th, August regular business meeting to order. And I'd like to ask Ms. Anaya to please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
On Thursday, January 14, 2021, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press in the current of Aggarve Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Aggarve Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this hybrid meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, July 23rd, 2021.
Thank you, May. We have roll call.
Ms. Alabarda?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ireland?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Can you hear me on this mic?
You have to hit the mic, please.
No, it's not.
There it goes.
My mic's not working either.
Okay, we'll get that taken care of. Okay, we will get that taken care of. One second, keep taking roll call. Mr. Price is here.
I'm here. Thank you. It went that time. Okay.
No problem. Mrs. Sullivan?
I'm here.
Mrs. We will get that addressed. I'm going to continue with roll call. Mrs. Salagi?
I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, please. Mr. Castellano?
Here.
All right.
Thank you. Can we all, can we all please stand for the flag salute?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I was just asked, and I'm sorry, I would like to ask everyone to please stand. We're going to have a moment of silence for a retired teacher, Mary Alton.
Thank you, everyone.
Regarding the microphones, we had our systems upgraded. It sounds so much better. If, for those of you who can hear the difference already, we cannot have more than two, maybe three at the same time. Definitely two are fine, but if everybody hit it the same time, it's not going to let you. So I think that might be what happened, so.
Okay, so first, I'm going to ask for a motion on the minutes. That's 4.1 through 4.5.
So, May.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Mr. Price, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Salagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So again, I'd like to welcome everyone to our July business meeting. The summer is busy, and especially this year, as we all know, as we are working through our summer programming and, of course, getting ready for the fall. So I just want to take a quick minute before our superintendent's report starts. There has always been a lot of uncertainty surrounding this pandemic with information and guidelines changing constantly, and that continues right up until today. There's one thing, though, that we can all do as a school community to help ensure that we have the best fall that we possibly can, and that is, anyone who is 12 and over, please get vaccinated. And in order to help you do that, we are going to be hosting a clinic in collaboration with Atlantic Care. They will be here on August 2nd at Aggarve Township High School from 9:00 to 2:00, I believe. The, they will be offering the Pfizer vaccine free of charge. No appointment is necessary. So that's one thing we can control. So let's please do that. Before I turn it over, every now and then, I like to embarrass people a little bit, pay a little compliment, and I'm going to just have to give a shout out to our very own Mrs. Hauck Elko and the Cooper Levinson Law Firm. They are involved and, in fact, started a non, and that organization is called Let Us Eat Please. And what that organization does is, they work to provide meals to students all around the area during the summertime when schools are not in a position to be providing those lunches and breakfasts that normally are provided during the school year. So it's a very, very important mission, and we want to just take a minute to shout, shout out to Mrs. Hauck Elko and Cooper Levinson, and Let Us Eat Please.
Thank you so much, and it is available to the families in Aggarve Township. They just go to the food bank, and there's vouchers there for them. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Okay, and now, with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Gruccio for our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. Welcome, everyone. One of the hottest days of our midsummer. That's a great thing. It was a beautiful day today, and lots of work going on in the school district, so I'm going to share out what's going on based on our student learning goals. But again, to remind you, as we approach the new school year, of our mission statement of embrace, engage, and educate. And, you know, we work hard to embrace our students and our families and our students, teachers and staff. We learn about their needs, what they're all about, and then we're able to engage them in relevant learning experiences, and we work to educate them with rigor, relevance, and building relationships along the way. So our COVID update this week, at the end of July, we have four new cases in the district. It's eight for the total for the month of July, four students and four staff. Right now, in Alana County, we are in a green status. Masks are optional in the classroom and mandated on buses. As Mr. Castellano said, we are spreading the news that it's important to be vaccinated, and there's a vaccination clinic on August 2nd. And then again, on the 24th, that'll be at the high school between 9:00 and 2:00 p.m., and Alana Care has partnered with us for that great thing that they do for us. Pandemic Response Team meetings will commence on August 11th and 12th at the building level, and then we'll have a district town hall meeting. We'll call it the Return to School Meeting on August 16th, 6:30 at the high school. The purpose of this is for our pandemic team meetings to reach out to staff and parents who are on those committees to talk about concerns, questions that they have, and then that information will be brought to the district level, and we'll have that town hall meeting to discuss what, what people are thinking. There are questions out there. What are we doing in September? I stand right here and say, we're going to open schools and be as normal as possible, return to school. But you open the paper, you listen to the news, and you hear masks will be required. You hear there may be virtual learning. I don't know. I haven't received any guidance from the state of New Jersey at this time. We have our superintendent's meeting in the next couple of weeks. I'll know more countywide, but as of now, I have no guidance. All right, so we'll have these meetings, maybe within the next two weeks, we'll have some more information. And then I also said to my staff, when I put these dates up here, we'll have the meeting on the 16th, and from the 16th to the 31st, there'll be guidance that may change because we've lived through that, right? But what we're going to do is, we're going to be prepared and be able to offer Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, based on the recommendations that our stakeholders give us. Okay, under student achievement, district learning goal, a reminder again that encompasses literacy for all, stream, social, emotional learning. I want to give a great shout out, a big shout out, to Ms. Kristen Boyd, who is the director of our ASPIRE program. That grant has been renewed again. However, she's running a great summer camp that the county superintendent came to visit a couple of weeks ago and was just in awe as to what we're, what is being offered to our students and the participation rate. So ASPIRE, it's called Takes Flight, All Things Failing or Falling and Flying, and these are the areas that our students are be able to experience. Stream, as you know, has to do with STEM, science, technology, reading, engineering, and art and math. There's enrichment opportunities throughout the day. Students experience one hour of math in the LA enrichment in forms of activities, games, and challenges. They participate in sports, recreation, art, aviation class, and drone class. And we are the recipient of the IDEA supplemental grant for the 21st Century Community Learning Center, where small group tutoring and skill building for special education students and their peers are offered for, in this program. And our students are learning aerodynamics, coding, piloting drones, and every morning, they kick the day off with a pep rally, which is a lot of fun. And we are partners with the Community Food Bank for the food for the children. Also, under Ms. Boyd's direction, is our Talents Program, the Talent and Learning of Next Gen Students. It's a program that we offer parents for after-school care. Our students are participating in educational and academic experiences in math reading, science enrichment. They participate in recreation arts, crafts, and science lab challenges, and they take field trips to the different areas in, in South Jersey. Also, under student achievement, our EHT Ready Programming is in full swing. Some has, have ended, some are current, and some will continue in August. Well, we offered credit completion, ready for high school, EHT Ready for elementary, extended school year, wrapped up, and in-person. It will go to virtual in August, EHT Ready Supplemental, our aviation program, and our COM Academy. So our school, some schools are open, staff members are in, students are learning, student needs are being met. That's what it's all about. Climate and culture, this is where we work to create a positive climate and culture in schools. We recognize, reward our students. We strive on the importance of cultural proficiency and equity. Our Renaissance themes have been selected for next year. Phil Boyd will be in the district in September to work our administration. Talk about Unified Sports as a program that we'll be bringing to the district and, and starting in the fall. We're very excited about that. That's an opportunity for our special education students to participate in after-school activities, and we're looking for that to happen K through 12. And our athletic practices are pretty much in full swing. I put that under climate and culture because our coaches are so excited and so determined to get our students out in the field, build teamwork, and have them working towards a common goal. Community partnerships is all about building relationships with the community. Right now, we are holding our in-person registration for students pre-K to 12. That includes kindergarten registration, so if you know anyone who have students new to the, to the community, be sure that they register for our schools. The better knowledge we have of counts, class counts, enrollment, is going to help us better plan for September. Kindergarten orientation is in our plans for the end of August. We are in need of bus drivers to get these students to school, so if you know anyone who's looking for a job, we have opportunities for bus drivers, and we train them as well. We have athletic camps. Our teams are offering athletic camps for the younger students throughout the district, and they've been held basically at the high school. We have aviation camp is going on now, and I'm announcing tonight that hashtag EHT Pride Day, which last year we were not able to hold, will occur this year on the sunny day of October 2nd, 2021. Also, part of our partnerships with, with the community is, I shared a couple of weeks ago that I, I met with the mayor and the representatives from the Recreation Department, and I proposed the, the building of some fields here, right? So if you're familiar with the high school, to the right of the high school, which we're going to use the high school as the center or the core of our community. I, there's a proposal here for five fields to be built. Also, a track that'll go around those fields, and hopefully some lights someday. So our Unified Sports will be able to use that. We can give our fields, our varsity fields, some rest because, as I shared with you, they do have a disease on them that have to be addressed. But the most important part and exciting part is, after hours of the high school use, that these areas right here, these fields and the track area would be used by the Aggarve Township community, right? So by partnering with the mayor and the township committee, we, we put invested focus on these fields and partnership their use, all right? So I think it'll be a great opportunity. The community can use them until 11, 12 o'clock at night, whatever the ordinance is, but there's an opportunity there to share resources and while also maintaining excellence on our varsity fields that are producing championship teams. As I do every month, I share with you a visual of what's going on in the district, and thank you, Tyler, for creating this. Tyler, who's right here with us. Created that superintendent's report for this month. So, Mr. Castellano, that concludes my presentation, and as you can see, everyone can see the great things that are going on in our district. Some people are laying on the beach and enjoying the sun, and that's a very, very good thing. But do you know that things are happening here in Aggarve Township? And Board of Education, I'd like to thank you very much because you've listened to our ideas and our innovation and our proposals over the last six months, and here it is in action. And the best part is, it's servicing kids. Kids are smiling, having fun, and they're, they're provided those enrichment opportunities or those catch-up opportunities, and they're opportunities to be better prepared for September. Okay? Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Santilli will give harassment intimidation bullying report as mandated by the state of New Jersey.
Okay, good evening. Tyler, I think next year, we're going to add some fun music to this presentation to follow Dr. Gruccio. However, as mandated by the state of New Jersey, this is our 2021 annual report for SSDS and also HIB. First, to break down SSDS, we start on that, that macro level. These are, these are the incidents that would be reported within the system. They're broken down by violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons offenses, and also confirmed forms of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. You can see the subcategories that also break down these incidents as well. In terms of our district, during the 2021 school year, on the left-hand column, you can see our school names, followed by the district-wide total, as well as comparative data for 1920, and also 1819. I think it's important to note that I have put an asterisk. Much like Major League Baseball, we have had some unique circumstances over the past year called COVID, which also impact our data. So that has been noted next to the comparative data for 1920, as well as this year for 2021. You can see those trends, and each column breaks down those major incidents for violence, vandalism, substances, weapons offenses, and also confirmed HIBs, as well as the total incidents within the district. This is what is under new business this evening for our board members. This is the same information just reported through SSDS to the state, which will be then certified, actually tomorrow. Moving into and focusing more on our harassment intimidation and bullying report, as regards to one of those particular incident categories through SSDS, this is our full-year report. Just as a refresher, it has a definition of what HIB means at the top. In addition to that, there are three particular areas here that we focus on. One is the perceived characteristic and being able to identify that, in addition, taking place on school property, and also determining if it has actually created a substantial disruption within the school environment. Those three must be met in addition to at least one or more of the below bullets during the investigation. Investigations are led by anti-bullying specialists in conjunction with our administrative teams to make these final determinations. You can see, this was the mid-year report, if you recall. Probably, I guess, I can't remember if it was January or February, but I stood before you to present our mid-year data. This was a snapshot of that as a just reminder for the time period of September 1st through December 31st. And then also, this is our end-of-year data, so this would conclude for the 2021 school year. You can see, again, listed by school on the left-hand column, in addition to district totals, and then also comparative data for the last three years. Again, just wanted to point out the asterisk in regards to the fact that we have been in a partial year pandemic in 1920, or even 2021 being the full-year pandemic, which of course has impacted our, our numbers. You see the totals, non-HIB, and also HIB or confirmed HIB for each of the schools and district totals as well. There has been follow-up, and, and oftentimes, it's, it's not just about what we do during the investigation, but also what we do after an investigation. You can see that HIB case follow-up with, in conjunction with our anti-bullying specialists throughout the district, in conjunction with building administrators and guidance counselors, as well as child study team members. Ultimately, what ends up happening is, we, we focus on what we do as follow-up for both victims, aggressors, and also what we do as school-wide. That is also reported to the state through that portal, and that is through programs and trainings that we actually do in each of the schools and, and within the district. These are some of the lists in regards to activities and trainings. You can see the monthly meetings that would occur in regards to school safety teams. We do HIB training throughout the entire district, presentations to both students and staff, mentoring programs, character education, and the list goes on. We're constantly trying to evolve and make sure that we are not just reaching our students, but also the community. And also, part of that is things like our initiatives, see something, hear something, say something, which is really a federal initiative that we've taken pride in here in the HTE, as well as every hand together pursuing public health videos, reaching the community, reaching parents, trying to provide resources with those community partnerships. In addition to that, there's a commissioners program, and we have to self-assess. So every year, our anti-bullying specialists, along with administration and myself as the anti-bullying coordinator, we take a look at how we did in regards to the activities and programs and trainings we've put in place, and we have to rate ourselves. And that is part of that commissioners program, and that self-assessment is then also reported to the state site. This is just an idea of that self-assessment and how it's broken down. There are eight core elements, and they are broken down by those indicators, as you see right there. And then you can get a score, a total score of 78 points. So as you can imagine, the higher you get to 78, the better you're doing. So to just give you an idea of our trend here for, you know, past number of years, you can see how we continue to increase our total score. Last week, if you recall, as part of the mandate as well, they released the grade for the 1920 school year, so it's always basically a year behind. So we reported that out. We did get a rating of 75 out of 78, which was reported last week to the board, and we anticipate for 2021, we estimate that we will again receive 75 out of 78 points based off of our own self-assessment, which will be uploaded to the state site. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Santelli. Okay. At this time, we are going to take public comments on agenda items only. We'll have two public comment periods this evening. First one is for agenda items only, and so we'll start here in the room, and then we'll go to whoever may be on the phone. And so if anyone here in the room has questions or comments on agenda items only, please come forward to the microphone. Okay. All right, don't all come up at once. All right, seeing none, does that count as for one of my jokes, or not really? That wasn't really very good. Okay. So let's go ahead then to our call-ins and see if there are any questions or comments on the phone on agenda items only. While that's running, I'll just go through, as I always do, some of the ground rules. We ask for everyone to please give their name and address for the record. Comments or questions are limited to three minutes. We cannot discuss litigation or personnel matters, and it may be possible that a comp, a complex question, we may need to get back to you tomorrow or in the following days with a full answer. Okay, we're out to the phones. How are we doing, Ms. Anaya?
A few more seconds, we'll be good. Make it a minute.
Okay.
I will go ahead, and I do have an emailed public comment, so full board, I have to apologize. We had a public comment at the last meeting. It was emailed. It had been over a month, and a step was missed. That's all I can say. So I apologize to the, to the community member. We did get them questions, their questions answered ahead of time, but because it's public comment, we're going to report out at this meeting for public comment to hear with the responses. So I have one that's related to agenda, happens to be at this agenda, but it is related, so we'll read that one for now and save the rest for later. Okay?
All right.
All right. So we have from Regina Bonjourno. It's 405 Starfish Lane, and the agenda question is related to, in regards to transportation shortages, have we been able to hire drivers and aides for this upcoming school year? I'm pleased to report on this agenda under appointments, we have six bus drivers, two bus driver substitutes, and three bus aide substitutes we're looking to appoint on this agenda. We are still actively recruiting. You will be seeing lawn signs, as we have previously discussed, to try to encourage the community members to apply. Parents at home, it's a great mom-dad job, so go ahead and put your names in, and then we'll train you, get you all squared away with your CDL. So that's, concludes the public comment for agenda item section.
Okay, and nothing, no one else on the line?
No.
Okay. Do we allow three hours for the West Coast feed?
Yes. Ding.
Okay. We're going to move on ahead to finance and operations. First, we are going to... First, we are going to hold finance item 7.5. So with the exception of 7.5, may I have a motion on 7.1 through 7.15?
So may.
Second. Is there any discussion on finance and operations? Seeing none, roll call, please.
There we go, thank you. Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Byrd? It's basically what comes down, I think it's two, not three. So if you're not voting, if you can just have your microphones off, we'll see how this works. We'll give IT some feedback. Thank you. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Sullivan.
Excuse me, Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move to curriculum and I'm going to ask for a motion on 8.1 through 8.6, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's not working. I'll make that motion, Mr. Price?
Second. Okay. Mike has a mic. Is there any discussion on curriculum? Seeing none, may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move now into personnel. We are pulling personnel item 9.4B30. So with the exception of that on personnel, if I can have a motion on 9.1 through 9.7, please.
So may.
Second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price? It is the item you're thinking of. I'm sorry, I thought you were looking up the item.
Well, I'm going to vote no to item 9.1B1 and no to 9.7A1. Yes to everything else.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we have, we have to introduce some folks, don't we?
Yes, we do.
I wouldn't have forgotten that. Don't worry, I would have caught myself.
No, and I'm excited to announce and introduce to you for the very first time in public, our new Egg Harbor Township School District employees. And please stand. I'll begin with Jennifer Craig, physical therapist, Davenport School. Welcome. Mr. Nicholas Baxter, special education teacher, Fernwood Middle School. Holly Lesser, teacher at Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Welcome back. Elizabeth Ritchie, teacher at the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Welcome back. Linda Champion, teacher at Miller. Jenna Hill, teacher at Miller. Chelsea Taylor, preschool expansion teacher at the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Erin Meehan, preschool expansion teacher at the Swift Sleigh Ball School. Samantha Florio, preschool expansion teacher at Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Amy Carr, preschool expansion teacher at the Swift Sleigh Ball Complex. Dr. Leanna Mullin, now the district data analysis specialist. Wyatt Singer, computer support specialist for the district. Heather Wertzberger, media clerk at Miller. Jennifer Reed, media clerk at Fernwood Avenue Middle School. Lauren Slom, media clerk at Alder Avenue Middle School. Alyssa Armstrong, talent staff. And last but not least, our new director of athletics of the Egg Harbor Township High School, Mr. Kevin Rullich.
Awesome. Welcome to all of you. Congratulations. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our business meeting, but if you have other things to do, you want to see that Olympic race or whatever it may be, you won't hurt our feelings. We understand.
Thank you.
As they are exiting, Dr. Grucium, if you could please make sure we know when the date will be to welcome new staff as well as the initial staff meeting of the school year. I guess those are coming, not right away, but they're coming. So you can just shoot them out to us, just so we get ready. We don't need them right this second. Okay, very good. Nice to welcome those folks. Next, we are going to move to policy. We are going to hold at the request of the chair, policy 10.19 for this evening. But other than that, I would like to ask for a motion on 10.1 through 10.19, please.
Motion.
Second. Is there any discussion on policy? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
Did you say we're holding 10.19?
Yes.
So we're not voting on 10.19?
Correct. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, a couple of items of new business and that would be 11.1 through 11.3. May I have a motion?
So may.
Second. Any discussion on any of those three items? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No to 11.1, yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, moving now into old business, I'm going to break these up into two parts. So let's first take, if we can, I'm first going to take a motion on 12.1. May I have a motion on 12.1? Second. Is there any discussion on 12.1? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No to 12.1, yes to the rest.
Okay, so just 12 ones, so that'll be a no, though, thank you. No problem. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, so we have now voted to approve 12.1. So now 12.2, let's see if we can't work this out together this evening. We have, and I'm hoping we can get up on the screen, we received some suggested additional language, supplemental language to go into these norms. I really think it's in our best interest to come to some consensus on this tonight. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. We have board goals to adopt. We have strategic planning to get to. So I would really like for us to, you know, let's work together and collaborate and let's get some norms. And allow us to move forward with many other things. Are we able to open the final document? I think that's what we're looking to do at this point and then, and then work through that.
The document submitted by school boards?
I think it's, I, well, I-
Or the first one, although there's a couple of attachments.
I think the third, I think if you go back, right, so in 12.2, I believe the suggested update, I could be wrong here. Okay. No, there we go. I believe that captures everyone's suggested edits. So we have with a before, during, and after with some suggested changes and additions, and then we have some items down below that I guess could fall into any of the three categories or just be overarching norms. There's others two that I haven't seen because I don't, I don't get to my agenda on a Tuesday because I'm working. I look at it all beforehand, so.
Disregard the format, I'm just putting in something I can edit. So before.
Is everyone okay with the before? As edited? Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Again, I'm going to be the sour grapes, but this is another set of roles that we're going to put in place that who's going to, are we going to monitor each other? Are we just going to briefly read over them? I think again, with our ethics that we sign and the oath that we take when we're sworn in is enough. As far as I'm concerned, before a meeting, we should prepare. During the meeting, we should collaborate. And at the end of the meeting, we should respect the decisions that were made. So I'm not going to add anything more to that.
Okay, anyone else on before? Go ahead, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
For before the meet, the one where it says, number three says continually develop trust. And I, there's nothing wrong with that, I just don't know how it fits in before the meeting, want to continually develop trust. What is?
Is your recommendation to strike out? I think if the board members just say, if you take this, like what Marita gave, she would like to keep number one-
Okay.
Of each, number one, number one, and number three, number two.
I was just trying to-
So if you want to just do number three, what you're dis-
Or maybe, I don't, not that I don't dislike it, but I don't know how you can-
Edit?
So perhaps the group that put it together at the offsite might want, might want to answer the question, who was in the before group?
And I'm going to say that I was not because I was, I wasn't able to attend them virtually. And then I was out at the other meeting.
All right, so, okay.
Any objections to crossing that out, I guess is the question?
Does anyone, all right, so we can, we'll cross out number three. Other than that, can, can, I see a show of hands, are we okay to leave the before section? And we'll move to during. Are we all okay with the before section? Yes, yes, just as it shows up there. All right? We're okay? All right, let's move to during. Who has thoughts on during?
Ask Richard.
Anybody? Are we okay with during as amended?
I just want to say that the part about developing trust or what have you, that could be, that could be put, I think that would belong during the meeting. That's just my personal opinion. That's something to, can work on while you're working together and keeping things confidential. That's just-
Go ahead, Delabarka?
Well, if you look at some of the items at the bottom that were suggested as possibly, you might want to pick number one. Let me see, number eight, maybe? If you all look through those and read through them, there might be something that could be added during the meeting. The items at the bottom are all from the suggested items that Mary Ann Friedman gave us at one of the organization times. So there's something we may have looked at before, but, you know, for discussion.
So at this time, recommendation to add number one and number eight from the bottom and move the developing trust to the section? Is that where we are right now?
Yeah, that would be right.
If we could, so let's do the, move the developing trust in, right? Approve the during, approve the after, then go to the bottom items and see where we might want to plug those in. Does that sound like a plan?
That's what I just suggested, there's a couple that might-
Perfect, all right, so we got that. So is everyone okay with the during? Kind of a silly thing.
So during is going to have these four items plus moving the developing trust.
Developing trust. Okay. Now we have after, I can't read after, but reading in context. No, it's not the science of reading, but I'm using the context there to surmise that that says after. That was for Mrs. Byrd. Do I get credit for that for a joke? Okay, good, all right. Oh, okay, so I'm looking for feedback now on after a meeting as amended. Thoughts? Are we okay with af- after a meeting as amended?
Mr. President, I just have a question.
Sure.
Look at after a meeting. In other words, it says number two uphold decisions made by the board, but number five says support decisions of the board. Is that the same thing?
I didn't want to edit, I wanted to give it to you all.
Yes, so what we're going to do is if we're okay with after, we'll go down to the bottom and we'll take a look at those and I guess there's some other things too. I haven't seen those and we'll see what we might want to plug and play.
Thank you.
I believe he was trying to say cross out number two because number five, they're repetitive, they're the same thing. Number five is just going a little bit more detail.
Yeah, so basically what I'm saying is really, you don't really need number two because it's covered under number five.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ireland.
Correct.
Oh, I get you. Okay, so you're not down the bottom, but from within. That's fine. Is everyone okay with that? Does that make sense? All right, so now we finished the after the, after the meeting. And so I'll, now I'll take suggestions from anyone of these. Are there any of these that we want to plug in up into as norms? Go ahead, Mrs. Alabarda.
I'd like number six to support the superintendent and give her the resources necessary to help her be as effective as possible. help her be as effective as possible.
Now, I'm fine with that, but my only question with these nine is, are these meeting norms or are these more board goals? Or are they more?
Basically, management objectives is how they're labeled by School Boards Association. So you really can almost put the-
They can fit in a lot of places.
And I included these, I'm the person who submitted these, because I thought we should have the discussion, I thought they were appropriate. Some may work, it's up to the board. I'm not pushing all nine of them, you know, I just think it would be a good discussion to look at these and see if they may fit for all of us, since we were concerned about some of the detail that may have been lacking previously.
So I'm going to, I'm going to take recommendations. Who would like to plug any of the nine up and above? I see Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
So number, number eight, where it says refrain from lecturing, grandstanding, or beating a dead horse into the ground. I think that, I think that goes back to, almost having like, we can either do that or we can have like a timeframe, like hey, you get, you get a couple of minutes, each person gets a couple of minutes, or if someone, you know, keeps time during the meeting, I know that could be a lot, but just how we, you know, in the public speech, they get their three minutes and they can come back around so that, so that no one person, you know, manipulates the time intentionally or unintentionally because we're all, not all of us, but a lot of us are talkers. Not me, but I'm just saying.
Never.
You know, other people.
When I edit this, when I really didn't like the terminology of dead horse in there, but that's the way it was worded.
Yeah, that's okay.
We deal with it.
No, absolutely, so I don't know if that's, I mean, I think that something of that nature, like just to be mindful of others in your timeframe when you're speaking in the meeting or an executive meeting.
Anyone else? Any, any other thoughts? I mean, my thought is, these are nine good things, but are not necessarily board norms. I think we've got a good set of norms. I think these may feed into our board goals when we do goal setting. But I'll take Mrs. Sullivan.
I agree with that. These are more objectives that we want to accomplish, so it should go under goals when we decide what our goals are. But I think restricting any of our speech even during meetings is, again, another restriction that I'm not in favor of.
Any, any other thoughts?
Mr. President? I would agree that this better belongs in, in goals rather than norms. It's all good ideas, but it's just in the wrong spot, in my opinion. Thank you.
I'm going to disagree because our objective's not necessarily considered management objectives, so they could be either place, folks. So if you would like, you think that listen and speak with respect to others at all times, that's, that's part of running a meeting, that's not just a goal. So they might fit. So I was just saying, I'm not pushing for all nine of them, I just think that they should be discussed and possibly they could be part of our norms.
Go ahead, Ms. Gilbert Floyd. Let me just ask, have, is listen and speak with respect to others at all times? I think we've kind of covered that, but if we haven't. So let's just-
Under number three, once recognized by the board president, ensure that each board member is allowed to speak without interruption. Sort of listening and speaking.
So do you want to add in that number one? We'll just add it in as a second sentence? How's that? Yep, we'll take that, we'll plug and play, and we'll put that right in, right after Because that's a good one, I like that. Sorry, I didn't get to Mrs. Gilbert Floyd, go ahead.
No, that's okay, that's my second time. So, and I think it goes back to like when I talked about, like I'm not saying that we should censor what we say or having our opinions, but just that goes along with the being respectful like of others' time. That's all, not censoring what you're saying, but maybe your delivery and then the amount of time that you, in which you do it. That's what I, that's what I'm kind of referring to when, when I think of, think of that. And, and one other thing for after the meetings, I know we, some, one of the board norms, I think, there's times when, you know, I've experienced it where we, this, we're not, maybe not in an executive session, but we're in the, the chambers or whatever you want to call it, and sometimes we have people that come in and start conversations about different things that, you know, probably really shouldn't be, shouldn't be discussed after a board meeting or what have you. So, not that the public is, of course, is welcome here in the boardroom, but I think that we, you know, those areas should be kind of kept off and maybe private, because I have had that experience of where, you know, people come in and it just kind of, and it kind of try to almost turn into a second board meeting and bring up issues and things where it's like, I'm going to be quiet because I don't know why you're bringing this topic up or discussing it with one board member or the other, because we operate as a board, not as individuals, where we're, you know, at a meeting.
So how about-
I don't know how to word it.
Would I be right summing it up, avoid sidebar conversations?
No, sidebar, I think sidebar amongst, amongst ourselves is, that's kind of like, like if I lean over and talk to Chris, I need to stop because I shouldn't be talking. But I'm talking about when members who are not on the board education kind of find themselves into the area where other board members may be and striking up conversation about things that may have happened in the meeting. I have had that experience where it's kind of uncomfortable, it's kind of like-
Like afterward, yeah, I know, I know, I've seen it happen a million times. I don't know how you, how do, how do we quantify in word, I mean, that's really not our norm. How much do we control that? I mean-
Is the norm for the board to not entertain staff in that area, or not staff, community members in that area? Because we can't control, if somebody wanders, we have security, thank you very much for being here, but if, if it's a board norm, then it's behavior after a board to not have a guest in our executive area.
In our executive, yes.
Something like that?
No, no, no guests in that area.
Executive, the executive-
After meetings.
Area is for, will be for board and staff only. Do we want to consider that as a norm to maybe-
I, I would like to consider it as a norm for all of us.
Stop that issue? It, it happens.
It happens, and sometimes things, things happen or things are said, it's kind of like-
People wander in and next thing you know, we're off, you know, talking about things that are really not productive.
Is it going to be just a sign?
Put a sign?
A sign on the door, staff and board members only?
Or board, or board members only?
Yeah.
No, we need, no, see, the thing of it is, what I'm saying is, I may feel that way and say, I don't think we should do that, but then everyone, the other eight people may say, oh, so we could go have a seat, that's not a big deal, what's the big deal? But I'm saying that it can, it has been an issue and it can become a problem. That's how, I've had that experience, so that's why I'm bringing up, it's something that we will kind of all have to agree on. And if we don't, we don't. But I'm just saying, I think it should be a part of that we all consistent, like, it's just like we know that no one can be, no one else could be in our meeting, executive session, that's not a, a board member. And we just need to be mindful of that because sometimes, some, some people come and they bring things that they have, that just aren't appropriate.
Well, and the other thing, I guess, that may, may tie in with it is, if those conversations are taking place, it's like almost having a secret, not a secret, but an extra, extra board meeting.
Well, I don't want to look at it as if I'm having an extra board meeting with someone.
No, that's, we're trying to do exactly the opposite.
About something.
So I just don't know what's, what's really the best way to capture it, but-
So as the administrator who usually is here closing out and kicking people out, it, signs are a good idea, and I think if we, if I would have, if I had the board's support and understanding to say, if I see a board member or a community member in there to say, excuse me, can you please bring your conversation out? That's okay too, we don't mind doing it without making it a norm, but it has to be that you all agree that community shouldn't be there. So I guess that's the norm we're asking about, is do you guys agree with that?
Yeah, can, can we try to do that without-
Without putting in norms? So we'll put signs up and then empower the board secretary to ask people to move out?
Yeah, because it's, I mean, you know, there's, there's, there's process to our meetings. Everyone has ample opportunity for public comment. We meet as a board, you know, when our meetings are over, there shouldn't be extra things. All right.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to add that there's a lot of great norms on here, and the collaboration has improved it, I feel. There is some redundancy, so maybe we can clean that up a bit. But one area that I'm torn about is the designation before, during, after. I like the idea of organizing it that way. However, a lot of the things that are in the before section are equally as applicable for the during section and the after section, so, so is there a way for us just to format it in a justice, in a list? Because, you know, respecting separate roles, that's important, referring all persons, that's important, collaborating in a positive manner. We want to collaborate positively no matter where we are in the meeting. So that's an area that I'm just asking, maybe we could nix those delineations, how everyone else feels about that.
Any other thoughts?
I think it's a great idea, just, it just cleans it up, and a lot of them are redundant before, during, and after, so we can just take that out.
Mr. President, so, so basically, Ms. Berger, you're talking about maybe just consolidating them all instead of actually saying, well, this fell under that one and that fell under this one. Just consolidate them all under one board norm, right? Okay, that makes sense to me also.
Mr. Delbor.
One of the, one of the suggestions made by the school boards is to call them procedural and operational. They gave that sample to us way back when, so that's under management team, you could have procedural and operational instead of that. And the other suggestion that they did give was before, during, and after, and they, then they called the fourth item board processes, we agreed to. So you can look at either one of those, but I like the idea of maybe procedural one, I don't know, that might be a way to do it.
I guess, though, I just go back to, it was school boards, our field service rep, who came in with us-
Yeah.
And gave us the before, during, and after format.
Yeah.
And everyone was all right with it when we formed them. So I guess that just gives me a little bit of the agita because we keep revisiting, revisiting, revisiting.
But she also gave us the packet that all the other ideas were in.
Right, right, but that, I mean, that's what she had suggested, so, I mean, I'm fine with that, what we can do is, is get rid of that delineation and just number them one to whatever they are, whatever's the pleasure of the board. Go ahead, Mrs. Berger.
I think I keep coming back to the board norms, the procedural way we went about it, and I'm having problems with it now and not then because I didn't understand the process then as much. We were separated to, into before, during, after, but we weren't told that is how we were going to frame it. It, it seemed to me, from my perspective at the retreat, that we were doing that to organize our ideas, but not to organize our norms for the, permanently. And I think another issue I have had, why, and why I've criticized the norms at this point, is because we didn't get to see what she presented to us, that, we didn't talk about it that night, we didn't collaborate about ideas that night, we were all separate, we brought back together, she collected them, and then we got this list. So it's not that we were in agreement during the night, and it's not that we were all on board, it's that procedurally, I know I was not sure of the process, I did not understand that is what we were doing and we were coming and we were in agreement because that was the way it was organized. So I apologize if it comes across that my issues arose later, but I guess in some ways my issues did arise later because when I saw what she provided us, it, to me, was not as thorough as I would have liked. So, so this is not a shot against that night in any way, but I, I just think our expectations weren't as clear as they needed to be, at least from my perspective.
Okay, understood. So everyone, we, we asked that we would collaborate at our last work meeting, we started the process, but we didn't finish. We've submitted things, so do we have a consensus that will simply make these a listing? We'll get rid of the before, during, and after?
Yes.
Okay?
I did that, we're down to 11, and if we're done with that bottom half here, then we can move on to the other.
Are there any others from the bottom that we want to move up? Because remember, we can save these for our board, for board goal time.
How about number seven, speaking of goals?
I'm, I don't see that as a meeting norm. I, that's a great thing we ought to do, but what, what do board members think?
I have a suggestion, sorry.
Okay.
I have a suggestion for that one. Instead of to establish goals, to focus on our district goals during each meeting.
Let's, let's move that up. Move that up, that's number 12. Are there any others that we'd like, that we'd like to move up? Sort of like we're moving, you know, from the minor league up to the big leagues. Any others that we'd like to move up? And then we'll take a look at anything else that was submitted, and we're almost there. We are almost there, they said it couldn't be done, but we've proven them wrong. So this, this was some more, something submitted more recently.
As a recommendation to just, this is going to be the norms, as an overriding, disregarding everything else, it should just be this was the recommendation received.
Okay, does, so the recommendation received was to substitute this for what we currently have. Does anyone, is there any suggestion that we do that?
Yes, yes, I think that's a good suggestion, and I think we should move on it.
So you'd like to substitute these three for the list that we have? This is kind of like, let's make a deal, remember Monty Hall? So you can have these three, or we can have the 12 behind door number one. The 12 that we've just worked through. Or we can swap those out for these three.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to, I thought, I thought you were going to add these-
No.
Before, during, and after.
No, I'm just going on the suggestion that we received.
Right, so we're eliminating before, during, and after, and they're going to be, these are going to be absorbed into what we discussed.
We already, so we already eliminated the before, during, and after distinctions, we just have this list of 12.
Right, I understand.
So the suggestion was, get rid of everything else, just use these guys down here. Does anyone want to do that?
Yes, I do, because they were mine. That's my suggestions.
Okay, fair enough. Does anyone else want to do that? Okay. Was there any other material submitted?
This would be it.
Okay. Are, are we at the place that we can at least get a consensus on the 12 and get this job done tonight? One through 12, no before, during, and after? Going once? Everybody good? Going twice? Okay. Sold.
Will I upload this as a PDF and this is what we'll take action on then? I can do that?
Yes. I, I think we can just vote on it. Is everyone comfortable voting on, our new norms will be one through 12 as they appear on the screen, so that will be the motion. And we'll allow Chandra to get back to her station, and we'll take a motion on the norms as agreed to in public session. in public session. Like the way I just formed that?
You're getting cooler and cooler, Mr. President.
Motion right there. And Ms., Ms. Haukalko, like the way, yeah, okay, good. You can see I don't get out much.
Just don't shut that down, ma'am. Can you hear me? Go for it, Mr. President.
Okay, so can I have a motion to adopt the norms as discussed this evening in open session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Alabarda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ireland?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
Mrs. Solagi?
No.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs., uh, Mr. Price, excuse me, Mr. Casalano, I'm sorry. Have a good day. Mr. Casalano, how you feeling?
Oh, did you get Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes. I just stumbled on your name, I apologize.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all, everyone. Uh, that was a long road, but we got there. Okay, uh, we're now into communications. We have a updated board calendar. Um, Senator Booker answered our inquiry about vaccines. Better late than never, but we appreciate the response. And, um, is there anything new for us, Mr. Delbarca, that you'd like to report from New Jersey school boards?
Only that, if you recall at the last meeting, uh, Ms., Ms. Anaya brought up about the meeting topics for the first two meetings in the fall for county school boards. So I was able to get them changed. So we are now having our first meeting will be October 13th. Will be creative ways to use S R funds. And the next meeting on December 6th will be regionalization. So thank you again, Ms. Anaya, for the suggestion. The state had no problem with it. We made, made it an easy switch. And that's all I have to report tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. We are now going to go back, uh, for public comment again on any topic. And I've already, uh, given our guidelines, so we'll, we'll start here in the room if anyone has any comments, and then we'll move to the telephone. Anyone? Anything at all? Anyone? Okay. We'll go ahead and move to the phones.
We do have two emails when the time comes, so don't let me forget. Another 30 seconds or so, we'll wait. Okay, it's been a full minute with no phone calls. I will start with the emails, and if the phone rings, we'll still be in public comment.
Perfect.
Okay. So we have Kim Minshall. I'm not going to do the timer because I timed myself and it's under three minutes, and it's too much work, to be honest. Kim Minshall, 115 Sandbar Road, Aggarbor Township. When will Davenport start building an all-abilities playground? I remember there was talk of building an adapted playground that would be accessible to all students. Is that still in the works? Second statement, did Sleigh Ball fix the leak in their building? Third, will the E H T high school pool offer swim lessons to children with disabilities? My children with disability, many children with disabilities are attracted to water and often wander. It is paramount that children with disabilities learn water safety. When will swim lessons be available to children with disabilities at the E H T pool? Currently, parents can pay for lessons for children who do not have disabilities, but this is not offered to families who have children with disabilities. Why not? And the last question, taxpayers pay for all beautiful sports facilities. When will they be open to the public for use? Can E H T hang signs with schedules and rules? So that's the first public comment email. Do you want me to read them all, then answer them all, or would you like to hear it?
Um, I don't, if, if you've had time to put those answers together, I think that's probably something Dr. Grucio that you're going to want to put a response together, write to and get back to with email, because that's, that's a, that's a multi-part. That's a multi-part question.
Your decision. We have.
Unless you've got.
We have answers, but, uh.
Do you have answers prepared already, then? Then we're, I'm, I'm fine with that, if you guys are ready.
Okay, so for number one, um, Davenport will, um, begin the playground. We've received proposals yesterday and are hoping to get this installed by the end of the fall. Regarding the leaks at Sleigh Ball, yes, they were fixed. Regarding the, um, pool and swim lessons with children with disabilities, right now, the school does not have a swim program outside of the high school physical education programs. However, the unified sports program may be something that could offer this. And, um, if you've lived in Aggarbor Township long enough, you know that the rec department used to offer, uh, the swim lessons, lessons in the swim program. So, um, it's up for collaborative discussion, um, as we move forward. Taxpayers for beautiful sports facilities, I believe I explained tonight that I present, there is a proposal on the table for fields, um, that we're working together with the township. I was in contact with the township just today, and they said that's going to be, um, it's sounding good so far. It'll be presented tomorrow night, um, at their meeting.
Very good.
Thank you. I'll go ahead with the next public comment email. We have from Regina Bonjourno, 405 Starfish Lane. I apologize if this was addressed earlier in the meeting, but if not, please advise on the following. What was the plan, what is the plan for the return of school and protocol for K-12 will need to follow in regards to masks and social distancing? Is E H T considering mask, where masking? I can't talk today, I'm so sorry. Is E H T considering making masks optional for students and staff? Will we return to the pre-pandemic school day hours versus a minimum four hours of in-person learning? How will lunches this year be handled? Will high school and middle school have lunch periods again? If the plans have not been made at this time, when can the public anticipate transparency on these questions? And then there's another comment by the same person, separate. So it's another three minutes, if you will.
Okay, well, before I turn it over to Dr. Grucio, I, I do have to say you will always get transparency from us. Um, be, much of what's being asked, as we spoke of earlier during this superintendent's report, and, and as we led in, uh, things are evolving daily. But I'll, I'll turn that over to Dr. Grucio.
Yes, Mr. Casalano, I believe you covered, um, covered it there. Um, and I, I know I covered it in the beginning of our presentation, um, of our meeting tonight, the plan to, to return. Um, you know, I stated I, my plan is to return to normalcy, but, uh, considering all that's going on, um, in the, in, that we do not have any information from the state at this time, um, we're going to go ahead with this pandemic response team meetings, um, the second and third weeks of, of August, and see what we come up with, and we'll move from there. So stakeholder input, hopefully some guidance, and, you know, we'll see where we are.
Very good.
Thank you. And this is the last public comment email from Regina Bonjourno, 405 Starfish Lane. Um, follow-up questions to concerns brought to the board's attention in prior meetings. Have the HVAC systems been working and on and updated throughout the summer break? Have they fixed the, um, known leaks, issues in pipes and sweating at Sleigh Ball? And will fall and spring middle sports be available for 21, 22 school year?
Okay, so that's really just another set of questions, but, um, all right.
Okay, for the HVAC systems, yes, we have been continuing to work on the process of preventive maintenance, and we've begun the process of replacing units, uh, and this will continue out throughout the school year. Have we fixed the leaks? Yes. In regards to transportation shortage, uh, we have had several hires just on this agenda. However, we still are actively recruiting, as Chandra and myself said in our, um, said earlier, we, we definitely need more bus drivers, so keep the push on. And regarding fall, uh, spring middle school sports, again, I'm hoping that we open in a normal setting and that, um, all our programs will be in place for our students K through 12. Did I miss one?
Nope.
Regarding masks?
Middle school, talked about.
Middle school sports, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. I think that brings to a close our public comment. Uh, we're going to go to board member comment. Um, and I am going to, uh, take the liberty of making the first comment, and I'll be. Uh, I just want to say, um, that, uh, over the past several months, I've been doing quite a bit of thinking. And, uh, you know, I've spent 20 years on the Board of Education. Uh, I've given it 100% of my effort over all those many years. And, uh, I feel now is the right time for me to step away. And, uh, I've enjoyed it, and, uh, the saying goes, all good things must come to an end. And so I'll just take this opportunity, uh, to say thank you to everyone, and, uh, just sort of formally announce that I will not be seeking reelection. Thank you. Any other board members?
Mr. President, we're going to discuss you later on. You, you're, you're on office till the, uh, end of December, so I think we can have a discussion about all your contributions at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Delbarca. Mrs. Bird?
Um, I have three questions. My first question is, if, God forbid, we are, find ourselves in a situation like we were in last year where we had to go virtual, I am imploring that administration consider having our teachers be either virtual teachers or in-person teachers, not both at the same time. I know that from professionally speaking, where I work, I was strictly a virtual teacher all year, while we, other teachers in my building were strictly in-person teachers, and it really benefited our students. Um, and I think that's what matters most. So I just hope that if, I pray we don't have to do that, but I hope that administration will consider that because it really does benefit the kids the most, even if they start out with one teacher and have to be swapped at some point. Because doing both, that's hard. That's really hard. Um, so I, I hope that you guys can consider that. My second, that was more of a comment. My second question, um, do we have dividers for every student in the district at this point? I know that we used face shields in the middle and high school, um, because they are transient. However, um, I think that at this point, we should consider making sure we have dividers in the event that we continue to, uh, have to move backwards instead of forwards. Um, so my question is, do we have that currently? My last question, um, is in regards to one of the questions we received. The all-abilities playground, that's a great question. I'm so glad that, um, someone asked it. I'm also so glad to hear that there are plans and it's moving forward. We have moved a lot of our special education population to Sleigh Ball. So my question is, do we have an all-abilities playground right now at Sleigh Ball? And if not, do we have plans for one? And if we have plans for one, uh, could we possibly utilize our collaboration that we have with the township to help us build an all-abilities playground that the community can use in school and after hours? Uh, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you read my mind because, uh, you can ask my staff what I directed them to do, and I might as well announce to the board, instead of sending you an email, I will be utilizing some vacation days beginning tomorrow morning, um, and possibly to, um, Monday. But however, what I left them with is, we, we need to think out of the box. We need to pro, be proactive. We need to think ahead and look into possibility of all virtual teachers. Now, as we move up into the high school, it's, becomes a little difficult because teachers, um, may teach different levels, all right? So they're an English teacher, but they may be C P A P advanced, um, honors. So, um, we really have to study what that looks like. Um, and that's why I really pressed, if folk, if kids are enrolling into the school districts, it's important that we know sooner than later because it's very difficult to plan around that. If I take a, a second grade teacher and say, you know, out of my 24 second grade teachers, you are a virtual teacher, then I have to take that class count and disperse it to the other teachers. All right, so, um, there's a lot involved. Um, but I assure you, we are looking at it and we are researching it so we can have answers for those pandemic response team, uh, meetings. So that, that was, um, one that I was excited to say that we're on the same page with moving forward. Um, regarding the desk shields, again, that's something that we can look into. I know at, at last year, um, there was, um, feedback from the, um, middle school and high schools about the cleaning process because there were different kids behind that shield, um, five, six times a day. So, so we'll look about, into that, and we'll talk about that. Um, and regarding the playground, when I have that response back from, from the township, I'd be glad to share, uh, that request, and that was four, right? I got them all?
And the Sleigh Ball is actually getting the playground, there's, be installed before Davenport's. Sleigh Ball portion.
The Sleigh Ball portion is getting the playground. You got that? Is that what you said, Chandra?
Yes, you answered the part about township, but she also asked about, um, Sleigh Ball having an all, um, all-inclusive playground as well, and that is actually further along than Davenport's. Yeah. All abilities. Well, preschool primary, Sleigh Ball primary is specifically a preschool school at this point. Um, Swift is K-1, and we're looking at upgrading. That is going to be behind Davenport in the order of importance, uh, but it's all on our radar, so, yeah.
Any other board members? Mrs. Sullivan?
One comment about the all-inclusive playgrounds. I know, um, having a daughter as a parent, we need to, um, have a gate or something to tie off a certain area of the playground because they, a lot of the students can't play with the other students, or if there's a gate open and you have runners, they're gone. So somehow we have, when we make this all-abilities playground, we have to do the scheduling for the students, what classes are going to be there? Try not to overlap, uh, too many classes together because having a lot of students in the same area at the same time also upsets some of the, uh, special needs students. So there's a lot that's going to have to go into that all-inclusive playground, and I know you'll cover it all.
Any other, any other board member comments? Seeing none, administration?
I think we're good. Thank you, everyone, for your support. And, uh, yeah, looking forward to more innovation and brainstorming over the next month, so we have some, uh, information to present to you prior to opening day. Thank you.
Okay, before I ask for that motion, I just want to repeat, um, something from last meeting, and I want to try to repeat all through the summer. Really, it applies at, at all times during the year, but especially during this, uh, summer, uh, to, to our students and families. If there's anything that we can help you with here at the district, whether it's academic, counseling, or otherwise, please reach out to us, and we'll do what we can. So with that, uh, I'm going to ask for motion.
Second.
All in favor, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.